That's good, call for me to order. Alright. Okay, um, Matt.
Here.
James.
Yo.
Yes, okay, Chris. Um, Carla, here, and Alicia, is it Steve? Alright, let's stand with the boys, please. I should have asked somebody they wanted to see.
People were asking that, actually, like grandmother was asking, could they all, if they can do someone?
Alright, well, this is a meeting of the Rochelle School Board in public for the purpose of conducting school district business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comments as indicated on the agenda. Notice of this public meeting will be given as required by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight four, one through four, by being posted at the Community First Bank, Rochelle Public Library, Rochelle Post Office, Rochelle District Office, Rochelle School Website, and with W D U X W S B T and W S A W. Consider approval of agendas, additions, and revisions. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Jane, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Matt. Okay, motion has been made, a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions, okay, the motion is carried. To the public comment, is there anybody on the public comment, okay, we'll just move right along. Okay, communications, district administrative report.
Evening, everyone, I just want to let everybody know that, um, I, within the last half hour, sent an email to our staff and put it online that we were going to try to do a two-hour late start tomorrow. Little explanation is that we are currently in a extreme cold warning, which is when many schools will consider canceling. According to the most recent briefing, which happened at like four thirty something this afternoon, um, looking at the window of cold, it looks like temperatures with wind chill will be in that extreme cold category until eight AM, and then from eight to ten, they actually are not in extreme cold, but again, I think they, they do that buffer of two hours, so in case it is a little bit later, um, which means that if we delayed our two hours and a normal pickup would be seven thirty, at the bus is now at nine thirty, um, we should be in that advisory, which is exactly where we were today. So that we're, therefore, if we do a late start, starting at ten AM, two-hour delay, um, we should be in the exact same conditions we were today. So, we haven't done one since I've been here with the two-hour start, um, I'm hoping that we can make it work. In the email, I asked, uh, if at all possible, staff report as normal, at normal start time, um, and then kids will come in at ten, and we'll just continue with our day. So that's what tomorrow looks like. Yesterday, I'm sorry, yesterday, Sunday, today, um, and tomorrow, Todd has asked, and I have granted permission for a sub-bus driver to be on call, or to be, I shouldn't say be on call, to be at the bus garage with another bus ready to go, in case there would be any gelling, so that way, we don't have the kids on the bus that, you know, it's just a backup plan. Um, today, we did not use them, but they were there ready in case we had an issue to go, to go to get, so, we should be in advisory temperatures when we bring kids to school, then by tomorrow evening, when we have, uh, you know, some event scheduled, parent-teacher conference, whatever else, then, um, looking at the temperatures, it's kind of interesting, they have a colored chart, and so the white and, and the pink is extreme cold, white is really cold, and then light grays are, are cold. By tomorrow evening, there's some blue, which means that we're, that, that's like negative nine wind chill, which is, you know, almost tropical by that point, right? But we, we ran school today with the exact same conditions that we anticipated for tomorrow at around that, uh, eight, nine, ten o'clock in the morning, so, that's what we're gonna try. Um, update on referendums, uh, town halls. Those have been going good, I had two more last week, I have another one scheduled for next week. Um, interesting one, uh, was out at chair, and, and some good questions, and it was one of those things where I received a question, answered the question, but then I was driving home, and I'm like, oh, I should have answered it this way, that would have been so much more appropriate. Um, you know, some of this sometimes, I don't know if you had the experience, but I know in, in job interviews, or anytime you have, like scholarship interviews, and they ask questions, and in the moment, you say this, and it, it, not that it's false, or, or, you know, untrue information, but there's just probably a better way that you could have answered it, and drive it home, like, oh, I could have answered it this way, that's so much better. Um, lots of questions, uh, some skepticism, uh, skepticism of, you know, the amount, and, and everything else keeps going up, and, and how can we continue to afford to have taxes raised for school purposes, I'm trying to explain that it, it, it's not a Rochelle problem, it's a state problem, it really, it really is. Uh, because I, I understand the questions, and I agree with the questions, because every school cannot keep coming back to the public and say, hey, we need a referendum, we need a referendum, just to stay in business, and that's where we are. I mean, it, the, uh, last fall, or last year, I think there was, um, over two hundred referendums, this spring, there's just over ninety referendums questioning, uh, questions going on to the ballots. I don't know if that sends a message to our legislators that, hey, we're underfunding our schools, or if they're like, yeah, that's fine, go, go talk to your people, because we're not gonna fund you, I don't know which way they're looking at it, but right now, over eighty-eight percent of our schools have gone to referendum at least once. To me, that sends a message to say, our schools are not being funded the way they need to be, because, uh, very rarely do we see, uh, what I would call excessive spending for new turf fields, or, you know, domes and stuff like that, that usually comes from private donations rather than the, the school formula, or the school funding formula, so, um, we'll continue to, to talk with people, and, uh, you know, I, I do have communications planned for March, we're gonna, uh, be sending emails, posting things to Facebook, I know, Trish and I were talking about the Facebook page specifically for referendum information. Um, again, Rochelle Record, uh, Rochelle Record article is coming out, Rochelle Record, we'll do another one in March. Uh, we're also planning a public forum, um, just FYI, we do have a change in venue for the March board meeting, the Thursday, the twenty-seventh, that's the week after spring break. Public forum for referendum at five PM in auditorium, and then if you choose to attend, I, I appreciate that, because that's where we get to answer and, and any questions that people might have, but then we'll just stay up there in the auditorium and do our board meeting in the auditorium, if that's where I went to board. Other than that, I know that we have a follow-up, uh, I don't have it on the agenda, um, I know Ms. Lampy, uh, was here last month to talk about the, uh, FFA, uh, use of the land. I thought I sent an email, like, a couple weeks ago, explaining why that wasn't gonna be possible, um, this year, because we have the two extra cross-country, um, the conference and the WIA sectional, and we were awarded that in part because WIA likes the course, they like how we run things. So for us to deviate from that course would jeopardize that award, and it would jeopardize it in the future, not saying that we can't change the course in the future. This year, it's a bad year to do that, um, so I know that's what I thought I had sent, and I didn't, um, there was another email that I did find that, that you sent, that you got that one, so, I don't know if I sent it to somebody else, a mistake, and they're probably like, what is he talking about? Um, but I, I couldn't find it in my sent email, so, um, that's kind of where we are with, with the route. Now, I know with last month we talked, but I think, Matt, you were gonna talk with our neighbor and, and see if that was a possibility.
Yeah, so, I went over by Mr. Morgan, and had a chat with him, and he is just not able to allow us to go into the, at this time, he has a long-term lease with the current farmer that's there, and he's in the middle of it, basically, and he said, uh, it'd be different if I wasn't in a long-term lease, he's like, then, you know, we could have that conversation, but there's just no way that I can do it, and I said, I, I get it, I understand, um, so I did start touching base with other area farmers. I talked to the family that owns the land right behind the bank, I think it's a Simones, I do believe, and they own about fifteen acres, twenty acres, that's right there that they farm, and I stopped by them and talked to them about it, and he was not home, but she was home, and she said that he would have no interest at all in it, um, because they let one of their friends farm it. Um, so then I went down, kind of just close by, okay, um, down Maple, Maple Street, Maple Road, it is, um, there is a new property owner there, his name is Scott Lockner, um, he does not live here, he lives down by, I don't know, two hours away, two and a half hours away somewhere. Um, he owns that property, recently bought it, there is a ten-acre field and like a seven-acre field there also, um, he owns fifty acres there, and currently, right now, he's letting his brother-in-law, who lives right there, farm it, because his brother-in-law just wants something to do, well, his brother-in-law has turned seventy this year, and most likely may or may not farm it anymore. So, I'm not sure if I can get you that land this year, at least part of it, but possibly next year, at least the ten acre, right by the road, it would be. Um, so I'm hoping, and I will go and talk to the seventy-year-old gentleman, um, maybe tomorrow or the next day, and see if he has plans of farming it, because I know him, you guys probably all know who it is, I'm assuming you guys know Dwayne Burkloch? That's who it is, so, I will go and talk with him, and see if he doesn't plan on farming it. Um, I will give you the contact information for Mr. Lockner then, and you guys can hash it out, okay? Um, I, I'm not gonna be in the middle of it, but if I can get you in connection and allow you access to ten acres, I think that would be spectacular for you guys, so, that's the update I have right now.
The caveat is that it's in close proximity, too, I think there's only so much.
And that's what, I didn't want to go too far out, right, I was like, yeah, I could probably go farther, but I don't know how much you want to travel with kids, thinking, this is close, right, I mean, within minutes, you're there, you know, that was my initial thought on at least, so. But he also said that if you're interested in helping plant five hundred pine trees, he's gonna be doing at this spring, if you guys want to come out there and help him.
That might be a good PR. Thank you for that, there. Um, a couple other things, just wanted to cover real quickly, uh, the compensation model that, uh, discussion that we've been working on, um, had our second meeting, and our third meeting is now scheduled for Friday. I think I, I think it's two fifteen to three thirty-ish, and we're on the, the third step of a four-step process, so hopefully, we'll have a recommendation before the board, um, pretty quickly, um, in the next couple of months. Mr. Larson and myself had a meeting, um, last Monday with the secondary staff, because something that was asked of, of me, you know, a, a year or so ago, has come back to kind of the, the forefront of my mind, because at the convention I, I attended recently, there was a small schools discussion, and one of the small schools discussion was about how you organize your school, because I think all small schools are, are struggling with limited resources, and so, they're like, do you have just a K-12 principal, do you have two principals, do you have three buildings, do you have two buildings, do you have, how was, how, just how, what's the organization look like? And that kind of got us thinking back to, um, when a decision was made to put the sixth grade in the elementary versus the middle school, um, because since I've been here, I've heard a lot of things about how our middle school students, um, feel a little bit like they're, they're, they don't have a purpose, they're not elementary, but there's only two grade levels, so they kind of get sucked up into the high school conversation, even though they're not high schoolers. Um, with two classes, it's tough to have, uh, like, middle school dances, but they're not allowed to do some other things with the high school, so, kind of a, a little bit of limbo there. So, we started to have the conversation a couple weeks ago, at the, as an admin team, should we move sixth grade back into a middle school, what does that look like? How would that work, what does it do to teacher schedules, what does it, talk, uh, what do classrooms look like, like, you know, all the things that we could think of, and then last Monday, we presented to the, uh, or just asked the question, um, whether or not that would be something that we should do to our secondary staff, and they had a ton of, well, what does that look like? The scheduling standpoint, what does it look like from a group, and we don't have those answers, I don't even know yet, right now, if we have the number of sections available, um, from staff members to, to be able to do something like that. But that was a question mark, and it, initially, I think there's a ton of questions, but initially, I think the, the response, uh, at least my perception is that, um, there was a lot of people that stated, we don't even know why it initially got moved into the elementary anyway, so why wouldn't we bring it back? Um, there were some questions about, obviously, you know, what does that, what does that do for classrooms, what does that do for scheduling, what does that do for me individually, what I have to teach, um, middle school, do I stay in the middle school, do I have to move to the middle school area, we're like, how does that all look, and for that, we, we just don't have answers, um, but we started the conversation, so I wanted the board to be cognizant of that, in case you start to hear things about, oh, what about this, what about that? I walked in today after being out on Friday, and a couple of people came up, they said, s- since when are we going to a block schedule? I go, what, what are you talking about, well, middle school's doing the block schedule, I'm like, no, ELA is blocked, but then there was, the, Mr. Larson sent out, um, some information, there were some comments about block scheduling, so I don't know if there was a misunderstanding about ELA blocks, because we have the reading and writing together to, to class periods, or if there is just proponents of a block schedule, but we're not looking at a block schedule, we're not looking at going to a block schedule, we have ELA blocked, and then the question would be, do we have a teacher teach the sixth grade block, sixth grade block, and seventh grade block, which would be a full-time teacher, and another teacher teach seventh grade block, eighth grade block, eighth grade block? Uh, we have to have certification where to do that, but that, those are things that we're, we're looking at now. At, at our admin team meetings, we do look through the comments, and we have another meeting scheduled this Friday during in-service, uh, Mr. Larson's gonna lead that meeting to further define what the staff believes about that, or what that looks like, because there's a lot of questions, but that's happening. Two more things real quick, uh, health insurance update, we had a meeting with M3, our, our broker for insurance, um, we are scheduled to have no more than twelve percent increase, which is crazy, um, but we're running better than anticipated, still not good, but our consortium's running better than anticipated, so our broker believes that could be somewhere between nine and eleven. My initial response to that was go to bid, because we've been with our current insurance company for two years. Um, the other five superintendents wanted to wait and see what the actual renewal bid came in at, before going, or with the actual, um, renewal for the insurance company, we currently work with, what that comes back as, um, and then go to bid if it's not what they're, what they're, what, what they're hoping for. Um, my concern with that is that if it does come in at a nine, then the other five schools say, yep, that's good enough for us, we're gonna stay one more year, and then if it, if it's bad, then we're gonna, you know, maybe go out to bid and see what other companies are there, that, that does make us look more attractive, because that would have been three years, so you get a little bit of a longevity look then. We're not going to bid every year, every other year, because insurance underwriters understand that, too, like, okay, you're gonna be here two years, and they're gonna be gone. So, by, by doing a three-year commitment, that does look better, it might help us in our bid then at that point. But it's tough for me to say to you, hey, let's accept a nine percent, even though we think that there might be a five to seven percent renewal out there from some other company, but we don't know, because we didn't go to bid, that's tough for me to come to this board and say approve a nine percent increase when there might be something. So, stay tuned on that, I don't know how that incorporates into our budget, we haven't looked at that yet. Uh, last year, we had a not to exceed eight, and they, or no, not to exceed nine, and we came in at eight, six, four, I think was our renewal, which was not good. So, uh, we'll have to keep tabs on that and, and hope for the best. Um, lastly, I have, uh, just a, a comment about the Land's End donation, um, we did receive a letter from Land's End saying that the note, donation was ready to be picked up, and we're currently coordinating that, but, um, they also, um, estimated the value to be about half what we anticipated, remember, I don't know if you remember, but we have, um, the board approved a letter saying that was roughly fifty thousand that we did based on retail sales, and they came in and said, well, it's really, we're only gonna have about, um, twenty-five thousand of this, so we do have a new, um, form to fill out, because they need that for their records, and that's what they estimate it's going to be. Um, so, just an update on why that is in the signature file, uh, because it's just a new one that they calculated, and whatever they can use for their records, we're just glad to be a part of that donation, because it's gonna help our caring closet for those students that, that need cold weather gear, so. And that's all I have, pending any questions.
Okay, do you have any questions? Okay. Um, Mrs. Pine, elementary. Hello. Hello. Um, okay, so, I just have three, uh, field trip requests, the same three that we do every year, um, we have our uh, safety cadets going to the Dells, and then the next day, the top ten safety cadets go to the Dells, and then our annual American College Special Education Marathon, or Edgar Spring Games as well, because they are all over fifty miles, I'm bringing them all to you. And as field trips we always do, so if you have any questions, I can certainly answer that.
And we have these listed in the consent agenda, so.
Does anybody have any questions about any of those?
No.
Okay. Yeah, these are ones we do, you know, whichever year we're there, I didn't know, Chris, if you have any questions, just. Okay, um, anything else? No, later, you'll have to listen to me talk about school finance, so, okay. Try to keep it short here, because I have to do at least ten minutes there. Okay. Yes, Kane, Mr. Larson.
Yes, um, first, uh, I'd like to pass it off to FFA, um, and I'd like to give some opportunities for Slampy and a few of our FFA members kind of share the exciting week that is FFA week this week, so.
So, I'm Josh, and this is Sierra, so, I just, we just like to go a little bit over, uh, FFA meeting with you guys, and what we do, and how we try to get the students involved in agriculture. So, I guess we can start with, um, today's activity, and we decided on dressing up like the thing with Old McDonald, so you can either dress up as a farmer or an animal, and then with each day and the dress up, or whatever may be happening, there's an activity that responds with that dress up, so, um, going through the days, it's gonna be like future careers, so that can be like dressing up whatever you want to be when you grow up, and then the activity for that would be tiger tossing, and being that we don't have school Friday in service, um, this Thursday, we'd like to do a teacher breakfast, and, um, serve out breakfast for all the teachers here and everything they do, and then we'll be wearing our blue and gold, um, just to commemorate. So, um, yeah, with all the activities, with everything you do, you get entries, um, like tickets, and then you get entered into a raffle, and then within the raffle, you win like little prizes, or whatever it may be, so this is for the elementary, high school, and middle school, so with a high school winner, you can win like a cash prize, so we're taking this like, big firm, get proud of yourself, and then with the middle school winner, um, be like a mini Vegas cheese, like candy, or, it's summer, something like that, and let you take it.
And so we wanted to incorporate elementary school, because other branch school teachers wanted us to incorporate them, so they know what's FFA. So, they have the same dress ups almost, except we had a change Wednesday and Thursday, because Wednesday, they are doing the, um, blue and gold while we're doing, um, favorite brand, and then their Thursday's actually to be their flannel day that they already chose, and so for their activities, they already got coloring sheets last week, so they have until Wednesday to color them, turn them in, and then we'll like judge them, and depending on how many students actually did it, will be how many students, uh, won a prize. Um, and for the, we coloring sheets, it's, we have four requirements on them, so like their name, the grade, the teacher, and then their timeline, um, they have to get it done.
Yeah, and, uh, with the activities for the middle school and high schoolers, um, so some of them can get, that's leads me to like a egg smashing competition that corresponds with like trivia, so with the wrong question, you can get either raw egg smash on you or hard boiled, so it's, it's up to them if they want to participate in that or not, but it's just a way to make it fun, and trying to get it all through, like, hey, if you have a face, I just felt.
And then going with the high school for Sunday, we do this thing called Thank You Farmer, so it's where we go around the community and a little outside of the community, and you just go around thanking them for the contributions that they've done to the community, and then we give them either chocolate milk or white milk, and a little box of pleasers.
So, uh, for those of you who aren't gonna be here for the teacher breakfast, we, it brings some level of fun for anybody who wants, so.
Oh, sweet.
Um, I just felt that's, I guess. Uh, I guess that's what this means about for us.
Is Wednesday for, um, elementary, blue and gold thing? For elementary. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure, because last week I went there for jammers, and I was told to read the calendar.
Did you have clothes on?
I had clothes on. But it was pajama day. I didn't have.
So besides the exciting things happening in FFA and Slampy's group, I'd like to share with you, uh, Ms. Schenzel and the exciting things happening in FCC LA.
So, speaking of field trips, uh, every year since I've been here, we've gone to state, I've only taken about two students per year, first year, I took three, second year, I took two. We have seven qualifying students this year out of the ten that competed, so that's pretty amazing for Rochelle, we had students compete in things like culinary arts, where they prepared chicken and green beans, and then we had two girls do culinary creations, if you look at the Facebook page, those, those beautiful, beautiful cakes that Sydney and Haley made, and then we had two girls bake like these cookie bars in a very short amount of time, so those were our baking girls, we had young gentlemen do wild game fabrication, where he explored his love for hunting, and then we had an eighth grader do a job interview where she got almost full points, so we have some eighth graders already prepared for the future, but we asked that we go to Wisconsin Dells, twelve PM, so they still get that first half of Monday, April seventh, and then we come back around one thirty PM, my goal is to come back earlier, but just depending on roads, just depending on things like that, we wanted to aim for one thirty, just in case, so, yeah, and then the FCC LA account will pay for the road trip, we raised enough money with our coffee cart that first month to pay for our, like, travel fees, but kids usually split the rooms based on how many kids are in a room, so if all of our girls sign up to go like all seven, they'll split the four twenty cost between all of them. My student teacher and I will be splitting our room, and our registration fees of one hundred and ten this year, and, yeah, hotel rooms are usually two twenty a night. I assume those will get lower than last year, because booking, we booked a little late, so, hopefully, if you guys approve this, we can get our rooms booked, and costs a little cheaper. Thank you so much.
Then, uh, the last one, you're probably seeing this in the news, or maybe the papers, but basically, the requirement, our potential bill, AB two, Assembly Bill two, basically says that school boards are required to have some kind of policy on cell phones, the good news is you guys have had one for quite some time, right? Um, what we're doing, though, as a staff right now, is we're just having preliminary conversations about what it looks like here at Rochelle, and what it potentially could look like, and comparing it to some other school districts. We had an all-staff meeting, um, a secondary staff meeting on it, we've talked as an administrative group, this Friday, we'll talk again as a secondary group, we've surveyed the students, we've surveyed staff members on what kind of a distraction they feel it is, um, we've talked to some schools that have gone to different extents of what their cellphone policies look like, and they've had some promising results, increased test scores, um, de- decreased referrals, uh, decreased mental health issues, decreased problems with vaping. Uh, and they said one problem they have had, some of them have, uh, um, basically banned them in their lunchrooms as well, they said lunchrooms are getting a little noisier, because kids are talking to one another a little bit more. They said they've had to invest in a few more games, board games, just because, you know, sometimes there's kids that are, that are caught up. They said they've had to invest in a few more games, board games, just because, you know, sometimes there's kids that are caught up with with all their studies, they've got, you know, they could read a book or potentially maybe play a board game nowadays again. Um, so we're having those conversations. After we talk about as a staff, then we'll talk to parents and we'll start to communicate through the, uh, weekly bulletins about what, what are some suggestions, why we're doing this? And then look to have some kind of like the open house for parents in the spring. And hopefully then in the summer, I'll be able to come to you guys with some kind of recommendation for a policy, uh, what we would do for next year. Whether that's, um, something similar to what we're already doing or we're looking at changing that. You know, um, currently your policy or our policy basically says that they're away during instructional time unless, uh, a teacher basically allows it for instructional purposes, which is basically what the requirement of AB2 is. Um, but again, everything's kind of on the table. Maybe that means no cell phones in the hallways, maybe it means no cell phones in the comments. You know, basically some of these schools, if it's out, then we collect it for the day, right? And if a parent comes to pick it up, some schools, you get a warning first, right? So we'll have those conversations with staff, parents, and then we'll come hopefully this summer with some kind of suggestion. So if you've got any questions for me at all or suggestions for me, feel free to reach out. You know what you think, so.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anybody have any questions or anybody that spoke? Okay, well, thank you both. All right, consent agenda.
Right, in the consent agenda, um, we have a couple of coaching positions, middle school softball and assistant baseball. Um, those positions have been offered and accepted and, uh, we recommend their approval so we can get the official contracts back to those individuals. Um, at, as of, um, right now, no resignation or retirements. Um, obviously the field just heard about those, uh, field trips to FCC LA, the spring games Edgar, the top 10 cadets and the cadets. Um, we have not received any gifts or requests that need, um, board approval. And we have our regular board meeting minutes from January 20th, 25th on the consent agenda.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve the consent of the agenda.
I'll make it.
Yeah, okay. Is there a second? Yes. Okay, motion has been made in second to approve the consent of agenda. All those in favor say aye. Those pose, any objection? Okay, motion is carried. Approval of bills with financial statements.
I did receive a, uh, question on a handful of, of expenditures. The first one was in regards to our school perceptions. Um, the information is currently sitting on my desk because I forgot to bring it to the meeting. But the breakdown for, there was four different phases that were approved. It was the, um, planning phase, the development phase, the survey phase, and then the reporting phase. Um, I want to say that phase three was $2,200 and phase four was $1,800. That's what was approved when the bills came in because we also made the decision to use, um, a company that school perception works with. And they had their, uh, they came up with their, their own mailing list because the mailing list that we could have gotten through our local places um, did not have any PO boxes or any, um, of those addresses with it. Um, so we wanted to make sure that if I remember right, they did not have any apartments either. And so it was just physical addresses. And so we went with that, uh, mailing list, which was, let's say, a hundred dollars extra. Um, and then we also had to pay outside of that normal quote for the envelopes, um, the, the stamped addressed envelopes and things coming back. So those two areas were over budget by, I want to say it was, uh, seven, $800. Um, but that's the reason that it came in over budget is because normally we would supply our own mailing list. In lieu of having that mailing list, we did not supply the envelopes in order to be scan them on our machine. They scanned them so people could send them back. Um, they did have 286, um, returns via mail, um, out of all the things that they sent. So that's, you know, if they would, if they would have all answered online and taken the online survey. I mean, again, our older population doesn't, you know, doesn't necessarily go online. They go to the Rochelle record and, and see it there and oh, it comes in a mailbox, yeah, I'll fill this out and send it back. Um, and remember that a response rate was doubled what it was, um, in the previous referendum to that same similar survey. So that's actually good numbers. It makes the, uh, numbers believable. So that was the reason for the additional costs in the school perceptions. And again, I, I think initially it was supposed to be $6,800 and I think it came out to be 77 something and some change. So it was less than a thousand dollar, um, over increase. Um, the other one, the other question was about some boiler repairs and I did have a conversation with Tom today about that. So, um, it says elementary boiler on, on the, the printout, but it's really, it is elementary, but it's our, our downstairs boilers and in our middle school elementary section. The way, the way I understand it, this has been an issue for, uh, quite a while. Over the past six, seven, eight years, there's been three instances where the damper stays open during extreme cold. And what happens is that all that cold air comes in, um, and they had to come in multiple times and our coil is a custom coil. And I, I think we heard it before, like there was 38 or 34 patches that they had to do. And so they pressurize with air, find a leak, you know, get in there, patch that and it's custom made. Um, that was the big expense just because of the time, but also they've now put in and approximately, I think there was a $8,000 expenditure, eight something. And just under half of that was to put in safeguards so that if it, it shouldn't ever happen again. Um, I don't know that, I, I can't say that the safeguards are a hundred percent never going to allow that to happen again. But it's supposed to greatly diminish, diminish the, the, uh, possibility of it happening again. So three times in the last six to eight years, if we have one time in the next whatever years, um, the question that as it was presented, like when are we going to stop spending all this money to repair and fix? And when are we going to replace? And I think that's a valid question. That's why we had Performance Services, Verage, and some of these other companies come in to take a look at our mechanicals to say, yeah, you keep spending money on repair. But it's such a, a big pill to swallow if we want to do it all. Now, we could do just the, the, uh, controls and the wiring for 30 to 40,000, I think is what that bid was. Um, but then there is also some savings when we do the bulk approach, right? The Samscope approach. If you're going to do just that little bit for, let's say 35, we could do all that and, uh, you know, a, a couple of boilers. You know, maybe separately, that would be 130, but now we do it together, maybe it's 115. You know, so the more you do and have them on site, the less the labor is to get all that stuff done. So do we do that? Um, do we put, do we put in the controls? Because then if we replace a piece of equipment, we can hook it in. We know that's going to be a more expensive in the long run, but is it at that time where, I mean, it's already beyond time that we need to do something? And maybe that's the approach we need to take, um, is to get the new controls and the, and the control on there. Because the other thing that is happening is that with our pneumatic system, we don't know that that happened until we come in and wow, it's really cold in here. What the heck's going on? And we find it, right? Luckily enough, we were able to find one in the classroom. This was one of the other expenditures that was, uh, questioned was some maintenance to some, uh, unit vents. And the other boiler that is actually in the elementary hallway. And that was one that gets, that was stuck open as well, um, but they were able to find that in time and, and again, it, it was a unit in a classroom. Um, and we found that before it got too bad. So that was a, a smaller repair. Um, so the, the, the question, and down there on that boiler, the reason it came in is, um, the controls on there, um, sometimes have trouble talking with the unit. And so if we were to get new controls on that boiler, have a, have the whole system wired for the, and updated for, for, um, today's day and age, then we could start to sporadically, individually, every year, take another component and add it. Again, that's more expensive in the long run, but maybe that's what, what we have to do, I'm not sure. So, um, those are a couple of questions I had about, about the, uh, the repair budget and the expenditures. Um, and there is also then the annual inspection that comes in and they do some tests and then they find a couple of things and, and they got to fix those, those minor things. But hopefully what we're doing is preventing a major thing. You're wrong to find out like what it, it would cost to get those boilers replaced and the controls and the, the hot water heaters, right? I mean, the, you, you're talking about stuff that is necessity wise already. This isn't about a, I mean, if our heating cooling was out, right? We shut the school down, can't have school. There's no hot water, shut the school down, right? This isn't us, an idea of like, oh, hey, we can, we can deal with it, right? We can put it on the back burner. We put it on the back burner for 30 years, you know? Like to me, this is something that, I know it sucks to spend money.
Are you saying we carved that out of the big picture? Take that out.
Hey, okay, this, here's what we need mandatory, like in order for this school, I mean, at any point in time, one of those hot water meter, hot water heaters can stop and we're done. Because we have one left, right?
Are we down to one?
Yeah, I mean, if it stops, we're done. We should, we shut the school down. I mean, let's find out what, what is going to cost to do, because that's what the control's going to run your heating and that hot water heater. That's what is, to me, let's find out what that's going to cost, right? I mean. Well, arguably. So if we take just the critical, basically breaking down the critical, the critical components for, for operations.
Yeah.
Um, and some of them might be good, really. The way I understand it, the way Tom explained it to me today, our elementary boiler system is, is relatively, is relatively new. It's not new, but in
working.
In working usable life, it's still, it's still within that range. The controls on it are a little bit antiquated, which don't communicate very well. So then the question would be controls, new wiring for the building. And Dan and I have talked a little bit and I don't know if he wants to come in here if he's listening. Um, Dan and I and Tom have talked that if, if and when we do that, there's also new wiring for the technology department that should be done at the same time. So if we're up there crawling around, we pull.
Tom's right there, Tom must have been in the.
If we pull, you know, three wires versus four wires, you know, six wires, double it with the tech wires and the control wires. Then maybe that's, that's what we should do. So, Mr. Richter, how are you?
Good.
Good timing. We're just talking about, um, some of the repairs and the critical components. And, uh, Mr. Worsby had a question like, could we get a quote for what it would cost for the controls? And the critical components like the water heaters and boilers to get those online up to date?
We, we have, we have numbers. We have numbers. We have reports, no. We have, we know what approximately what this is going to cost us. We have that.
We do. The other, and the other question would be which control system do we want to use? And.
Yeah, and that's something we're going to decide that we can talk about it and I'm not going to get into the nitty gritty of it, you know, because, you know, some of, some of the programs are exclusive. So if we do that, then we have to use that company, you know, all the upgrades and then what's the charter? We don't know all that yet, you know?
But that's something we could have by March. And again, part of it is that we could do it now, it'd be great because this is when stuff.
And I know I got contract this year and one of the things like, you know, we say, why don't we repair this? Why, why? Because there's lead time, so I can't just say, well, you know, I want a new air, uh, a new unit vent today. You know, I got three months lead time on. That's why there's long range, it's got to be planned so that we could do this stuff.
And that's why I think if we start looking now, right? I mean, obviously it can't happen tomorrow. But if we look at it now and say, okay, let, let's go out, let's get these bids, right?
We, we are, we are further ahead, but you know.
That's our requirement.
How that money's going to work.
You know, our requirement is get those bids, let's get those bids and figure it out, right? I mean, and that way at least we have something to look at and say, okay, we need $180,000, okay, where can we get this from? Or how can we plan for next year to get this done, you know, in fall or whatever? It, it most likely obviously it's not going to get done now, right? That's not a, but.
You know, heating and cooling, you know, we're looking, we're looking at $5 million, you know, the upgrades is this, that's what it is. We need all that stuff. You know, would we, would we do all the air handling? Probably not, you know, did we have a bid? Yeah, you know, that's, you know, you know, it's, it's, and then, you know, the thing about the safeguards right now is, you know, and each time we've had a problem, it's either happened on a day or Sunday or something like that, we find all the weird, what, you know, like walk through and all my others, so. You know, there's no, when you have the digital system, it'll come, you know, you know, this is something to be a problem, you know?
Do you have to replace the VAVs too, or can they be converted?
So we only have VA on the 98 building.
Okay.
Would we do that? Yeah. So anything that, anything that getting, you get to your incentives, you'd have to do that. You know, already incentives all that much, but it still adds up, you know?
Sure.
I'm just looking, I don't know how much we spent on repairing last year, right? But this, this month, this bill was.
We're, we're at that point, you know, like. Say what you want and you know, it's, it's, stuff is just breaking down. It's, it's, it's seen it like it has, it has. And then, you know, can we ever go part to part? No, because you can't get them anymore or this, you know, it's, everything, uh, uh, a $500 job turns into a $2,000 job because you got to reconfigure everything else. That, that's probably. Well, because this component doesn't work with this one and.
So, so you have quotes on the absolutes that we need, you know, the absolute boilers, the hot water.
We have actually two, two sets.
So we have, we have complete control and performance services that come through.
Both have.
And they have broken it up.
Complete.
This, 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 and this.
Okay.
Do I have it, can we have it ready by the next board meeting to say, what are the critical components? Because I think this is.
Well, we, we have that too because we put them in one, two, three, four.
We did, we prioritized, so we can, we, we can get that to the board. Um, I mean, what do you guys all think?
No, I think we probably do, otherwise we're going to just nickel and dime ourselves.
And we're going to keep putting it off, right? All of a sudden now it's.
It's going to cost more.
In June and.
Right, and we all know the best thing to do is in the summertime.
And it's here. And what's, what else is going to happen now? I, I know, I mean, I don't want to talk any political, what's going to happen with tariffs? Is it going to be where it's hard to get stuff again and, you know? The big thing about this stuff here, it's like when you're planning this, it's almost like you're planning the year ahead. So it's, you have to plan a year ahead before you say, let's go. It ain't like before, yeah, we can get them, we can get all of those.
I'm sure air handlers are still way out too, right?
Air handlers is the worst thing. Air handlers are at least a year out, you know, but we've all come to the conclusion that we would rebuild the air handle, you know, put the VA, uh, the mo, uh, drives in and, uh, you know, put new motors in, do all that stuff, even a box is a box, right?
Exactly.
A box is a box. We got to redo the dampers. We got to, the biggest thing is getting digital controls on these things. So we have, you know, over the lung, yeah, are you going to see this in two, three years, the maintenance? But, you know, because there's going to be some glitches. But over time, you're going to see maintenance go down. All the schools I've talked to are maintenance dumb because they can get ahead of everything instead of, you know?
And it's really about that warning mechanism to say, hey, something's not looking right here. Oh, let's go check it.
Then you just go near laptop or computer, right? And says, boom, this one here.
It'll go right to my phone, like I can sit at home and it'll come right to my phone.
I mean, oh, yeah, that's, I think.
It'll go.
This has been needed for a while.
It'll go right to our contractors, you know, our, our service person too, you know? You want it to come out or don't you? That's what, that's the way that's going to work.
Under the same, under the same context, how much have we spent on repairs due to a leaky roof this year? Not much, right? Because we got to break the roof.
Yeah, not, not.
Previous to that, we were spending quite a bit fixing tiles and fixing things up in, in the ceiling. Now we don't have that.
Honestly, I know maintenance is part of our, our thing, but now we're, we're doing too much fixing. I mean, it's just too much. And then can we ever do it the right way? Probably not because we can't get the components to do it right.
And no offense to you guys, you, you guys aren't plumbers. You're not heating and cooling professional, you know what I mean? You're, you can do stuff, but you're not.
Be shocked how much stuff we do.
No, but you know what I mean? Like you're not.
I, you know, I talked to, I talked to a lot of guys in my stuff here and, and the maintenance they do compared to us is, you know, I mean, even the pre, you know, it, but right, and we don't have the, like a boiler. Yeah, I can, we can clean that boiler out and stuff, but we can't run the test because we don't have the equipment. We don't have the pressure, you know, the, I mean, you could spend thousands and thousands of dollars on testing equipment and go to school and learn how to use it, but it's, you know, right, or like you said, not heating and not every heat, that's why it's, it's when you get into the schools and you know this. There's only certain companies that can do this stuff. It ain't like it's, you know, your local guy can say, you know, come in and do this, they can't do it.
Well, then I think the consensus is, or I'm getting the feeling that maybe we need to figure out exactly what the prices of what we have. And I know you have all this stuff, but bring it to us with these things that we need because, and then go from there. Okay, it's going to take a while to get those parts on top of it. Like Matt says, if the water. Like Matt says, if the water heater breaks or stuff, we can't have school. I mean, so I think.
Well, we're not, we're not.
We're not there yet, but. But it could happen.
Water heater, but on the heating and cooling?
Could happen.
You know, we're not that far away.
It could happen.
Tell you right now, we're not that.
It could happen tomorrow. You know what I mean? Like, and it's not trying to.
And the other thing is, you know, we've been so lucky where these have happened. You know, the worst one we had was down this hallway over here, but we, it was happened during the day. And that was the upper one that, that dampened that stuff open. You know, when it's twenty below zero, it don't take long for that, that little coil to freeze. I mean, it's a matter of minutes and it's frozen.
I do see uh, um, Mr. Powers stopped it too, because he can, he can better articulate that if we, decide to go into digital controls, we run wires through the building to run to all those components. So it's just sitting there, the back one's there, so that way when a new component comes into the building, we can just connect to that system. I know Dan has asked about uh, running tech equipment, so he can explain a little bit about that wiring as well.
Yeah, so, um, cause each controller has a network jack. And then, so we would have to buy some switching equipment, uh, just for ports, uh, for that access, cause, I don't know how many controllers can control each room and stuff like that, so. I'm assuming it's kinda like a door system where there's one controller that can control four rooms, but I could be wrong.
Not more. Uh, probably up to about seven, probably.
So there's that, um, our, our wiring in our building is a hole, so that, that might just come with it.
So we were thinking about doing it at the same time, you know? And even our, I mean, I had one of our contractors and it, they would do it at the same time. They're like, yeah. Basically, right now, the way wires are, you're running one main wire down anyways, and you're branching off, you know.
Yeah, it's cheaper to run. James, you know, I mean, it's cheaper to run six wires than one line, you know.
Then I guess just bring all that information to us, so we can get going on that, so that all of a sudden, we're not stuck.
We'll have it here in March and try to figure out a funding mechanism for that.
See, that's, that's where we got stuck is on the funding.
Yeah.
Because.
But we, we can, we've been, I've been here six years and we, can't think of anything that's on how many times ready and it's like. Yeah.
The best part, Tom, is that's our job to figure that out.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, bring it to us and we'll see what we can do.
Yes, it's time.
It's time.
It's been checked on the road lately, you know. I mean, I believe a forty.
But I just wanna explain that, and that's why we, we fix stuff instead of, because, you know, I, I can't, half the stuff I can't just say. You know, let's just put it in.
Oh, we get it, but, I mean, I, I'm looking at it and saying, oh, hey, there's eight grand, there's twelve grand, you know, this month. Last month, how much did we do? The might, you know what I mean? Like, all of a sudden, in a year's time, we spent twenty five thousand dollars fixing something.
You know, and it's frustrating to us, because we spend so much time on, you know, maintenance and stuff like that, make sure everything's good to go and then, happens anyway, because we just, you know, we can't look at that heat bill and say, okay, it's gonna go today, you know?
Yeah, okay.
We'll compare that for March and then, um, Rachel, I can sit down too and discuss financing and un- uncertain.
We imagine.
Thanks, Rachel.
Use your magic.
Maybe, maybe we can have money trees planted like along the cross country course.
Well, if I win the lottery, I will give you that five million.
We heard it here.
It's recorded.
There goes your new rope.
I'll guarantee that. Well, that's not. I want you to do that, and that's a contract.
As a family issue.
Yes, yes.
Well, Mr. Powers and Director, thank you very much for stopping in, because that helps explain kind of our situation.
All right.
All right, so I guess I, I.
So.
Do you have any more?
Those were the questions I received, uh, subject to the other questions that you might have about the checks receipts and, um, activity funds.
Anybody have any other questions?
Better than a can of worms, but yeah, no, so.
Well, we gotta.
At some point, we do have to address it, and that's why we had energy performance services, complete control. We had those companies come in and kinda give us, well, how would you fix this, right? And that took a little bit more planning, on a lot of their parts, because sometimes that's that full blown facility study that they charge for. Frankly, I mean, they, they've probably done some of that work or most of that work already, and they have not charged us. So it's just a matter of figuring out, if we go with a company like that to do the whole thing, do we stick with that? Do we try to piecemeal it? And again, to, to Tom's, Tom's point, some of that's proprietary, some of it's not proprietary, right? So can we intermix different components? Um, without going back to the same person, because if we do this over the next, four years, or let's say whatever that might look like, um, cause we're, I highly doubt that we're gonna find money to do five millions of dollars with the work. We just can't do, we, we looked at, at putting that on this referendum, and that doubled our taxes from seven something to fourteen something. But a capital referendum could extend that to twenty. There is a minimum, amount that the board can decide to borrow without going to publics. Um, you don't have to go to referendum for anything under a million. So, those are things that, I mean, we'll also have that information for the board in March to say, what are the options? As I was looking at Rachel to say with, let's be, come up with brainstorming how we could fund even smaller pieces of that, right?
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve, um, the bills with financial statements?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, James, is there a second? There's been a motion and seconded to approve the bill's financial statements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motions carried. Old business, we have no old business. New business.
This is, I put it in.
Well, that's right.
I linked it. You just wanna, don't really, I mean. I don't know, just say thank y'all.
We are honored tonight to have Mary Klein present a budget for us, as part of her and future education.
Go ahead and step up here.
Um, hi, everyone.
Hello, Mary.
As you're aware, I'm currently enrolled in a program which led, will lead me to get my superintendent license. And in doing so, I thought if I'm ever going to be a superintendent, I'm going to need to know a little bit more about the finance portion. Um, because a small district like ours doesn't have a school business manager. Rachel is amazing, and she's learned a ton. But we don't have a school business manager, and if I'm going to one day have to lead a district, I think I'd need to know a little bit more. So, um, I dual enrolled in my program, and this is an assignment that I have to have completed by, before our next board meeting, which is why it's today. Um, so I'm gonna ta-, share with you a little bit about school funding, where we get our money from, and what we can maybe do about trying to get some more. Whose responsibility is education? According to the U S Constitution, the responsibility lies in the hands of the states. But of course, there is a compelling national interest for a good, basic education for all students. So the federal government does provide assistance to supplement state support. It does not supplant state support. So currently about three percent of our budget comes from the federal government. The rest comes from state and local taxes. Um, you know, this money that is provided by the state is to help reduce the local property tax. That ensures that every child in our district gets a basic education. So what's your responsibility as board members? According to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, each school board member should know these basic things. We, you should know what our facility needs are, which we just discussed. And then what our current financial situation is, because ultimately you need to be able to answer the questions. Can we retain and afford, um, quality employees? And are we providing an equal education for all students? Um, your responsibility then is to work with administration, to set the vision and the mission of the district, and align the budget to meet those shared priorities of not only our school district, but the community. Of course, there's timelines for everything. How do we do that? Well, the board works with the superintendent to build a budget that aligns to those shared goals. The board has to approve a preliminary budget by June thirtieth. And then you have to hold a budget meeting, a budget hearing, no earlier than May fifteenth, and no later than October thirty first. And then eventually, between October fifteenth and November first, you have to adopt a formal budget, which supersedes the preliminary budget that you, um, passed in, you know, by June thirtieth. Where does our money come from? Well, we receive money from the federal government, three percent of our total. We receive money from the state and then from local taxes. Like I said before, we're three percent from the federal government. We currently get, um, forty six percent of our, budget through state aid, and then fifty four percent from, um, local taxes. So we are more local taxes than state aid. There are school districts that are opposite. Well, because taxes is where all this comes from. It comes from taxes, state taxes, federal taxes, and local taxes. Um, in the early eighties and nineties, late eighties, early nineties, the Wisconsin property taxes were just going through the roof. And the state legislature said, we have to stop this, so they imposed what they called revenue limits. What are they? In simple terms, it's just the maximum amount of money that we are allowed to collect, from the state, or local taxes to educate our kids. The basic formula is right here. We take our student membership, which is not our enrollment. Enrollment is students in our, in our building. The membership actually is reduced, because our four K students only count as point six of a student. Um, we take that, we multiply it by the per pupil multiplier, which is actually determined by how much money we spent last year. And we get our maximum revenue limit authority. What I find very interesting is obviously, Wisconsin revenue limits are controversial. They're controversial for two main reasons. One is these revenue limits have not kept up with inflation, which is why we're, where we are right now. And then two, the formula is based on membership. And when you look at a reduction of declining enrollment, which has happened across the state, for the last twenty years, the majority of districts are declining enrollment in districts. Um, it is based on, you know, we lose a couple of kids this year, we lose a couple of kids, we lose a couple of kids, we lose a couple of kids. Well, just because we lost three kids doesn't mean that our electric bill goes down. The cost for electricity stays the same, regardless of if we have four hundred kids in our building or six hundred kids in our building. Um, another interesting thing to think about is as our membership goes down, let's say we lose five kids. Well, we don't lose five first graders, making it, an easy decision to say, oh, well, we could reduce our first grade. That, that is not the way it works. We get one first grader, two high schoolers, and two middle schoolers. And so you can't necessarily use cutting teachers as a solution for our budget concerns. How do we figure out how much money will we get? Well, I don't know if you've ever seen this. Have you ever seen this? This is the revenue limit worksheet that Rachel has to do. And I, here's another really interesting point. This comes out in late June. Yet you are supposed to pass a preliminary budget by June thirtieth. This is what the late June one looks like. And I understand it's really small. I've got it linked. If you wanna click on it directly and you wanna actually look around at it, you can feel free to mess around in the one that I've got linked. It's my own copy, so if you change things, it doesn't affect anything that she actually does. It's a, it's a special one. Um, so, when we get this original budget worksheet, it comes with things green that are pre-populated. It comes with yellow, which is also pre-populated by the state, which has been collected already, through our state, um, aid, are the submits that we put through, as well as, um, things that D P I collects. And then all of the red stuff is what hasn't been collected yet. And so as soon as this comes out, about once a week, Rachel tries to anticipate what those red numbers will be, to help you guys really truly understand, what our tax levy could possibly be and what our mill rate could possibly be. So until the final one gets approved, when the state budget gets approved, in mid-October, she does her best guess by researching and looking at, okay, well, I, this was coded here and this was coded here, and this is the number, so I think this is the closest I can get. And she does kind of a guessing game, not a guessing game, but an educated guessing game, to try to get you as much information as possible. This is what it looks like at the very end, and the, the red that are left are just for you guys to decide. Um, are we going to levy to the fullest extent possible? Because we could always, choose to levy less. We just can't ever levy more without require, or without going to referendum. Again, I've got this one linked in, if you wanna see it up close. So what's our limit? Well, we take our membership, which is like three-year rolling average. So it's not just who we have this year, it's who we have had for the last three years. Divided by three, so you get an average. Um, it takes into account third Friday count in September, and then summer. We do a, another Friday, second Friday in January, that count is, is not a part of our membership. So any students we pick up after the third Friday in September, don't count for us unless they're here on the third Friday next year. Right? So we've picked up, uh, about seventeen kids, Shane, since the start of the school year?
Quite few.
And we don't get aid for them, until they are here on the third Friday of September next year. And let's say attend summer school. So, right, like that's just a little caveat there that maybe you didn't know. Then we take that times our per pupil, um, dollar amount, and our per pupil dollar amount is, calculated by what we spent last year. Um, it also takes into consideration the state categorical aid. It takes into consideration the money that we've spent from our current referendum. Um, and then added on to that is three hundred and twenty-five dollars that Governor Evers had written into, the twenty twenty-three budget. Remember, it was pretty controversial. He wrote in that, every student is gonna be worth three hundred and twenty-five dollars more per year for the next four hundred, two years. And that's still currently, um, you know, being lawsuitsed. Uh, but right now it's active, so we get an extra three hundred and twenty-five dollars per kid. Then you add our current referendum and our recurring exemption. We do have a recurring exemption, which is called the transfer of service. So that is a one-year exception, exemption that we get, for students with disabilities or students with language needs that we didn't anticipate having. A family moves in, we didn't anticipate them having, or we didn't anticipate having them. We have additional costs because of that. We get a one-year exemption. So that number changes depending on if we have students, um, enrolled throughout the year.
No matter when they enroll.
No matter when they enroll, correct.
It's not like the other people that.
But we do have to apply for that. So Marathon County Special Education works very closely with Rachel and Dennis to, say, okay, we didn't anticipate these children, therefore, we're gonna claim that we need additional funds to help, educate these children, because we didn't know that we were getting them. That gives us our total revenue limit authority, which is seven point nine nine million. We take that total revenue, and we subtract our equalization aids. So last year, we had, um, you know, three point six six eight million, came from the state. We don't qualify for high poverty aid. That is something that we could possibly look into, like how could we have maybe all of our families fill out the free and reduced lunch form? Perhaps there are families that would qualify, that would help raise our, um, status there, and perhaps we could be receiving some extra support. There's a computer aid and there's a personal property aid. And when we subtract that off, we are allowed to ask our, state or our local taxpayers to help us pay four point three million dollars. But not quite. Then you have these areas that are added on top of it. Fund thirty-nine, um, or sorry, prior year levy chargeback. We don't have that currently. Fund thirty-nine is a debt. We don't have that currently. Fund thirty-nine is a debt levy. We currently don't have any debt, so we don't have that. And then we also have, and what we do have is our fund eighty, which is the community service tax levy. And in our case, we use that for the huddle service that we carry for our community members. So that is allowed to be taxed above the revenue limit because it's going directly to our community members. Which leaves us with an overall tax levy of four point three one million dollars. Then they take that tax levy and they divide it by our equalized property value. Multiply it by a thousand to get the mill rate, and our mill rate is seven point three three for next year. But I need you under, to understand that our equalized property value is not the property value that our taxpayers see on their tax bill. The equalized property value is the state's way of trying to equalize all of the property in the state. So they take all different types of property, agricultural, if it's owned R one, R two, commercial, it doesn't matter. They lay that all out and they, they equalize it to say, you've got this percentage, this is how much that costs. And that's the dollar amount. The reason they do that is they try to make sure that these compare, like all properties are, have a comparable value. So that if you have a community that does local assessment adjustments every single year or a community that does it every ten years, the school district is receiving aid that's comparable to other properties similar to that in the state. That's how we get our mill rate. So the big question is, what can, what can we do? What can we all do? What can our teachers do? What can you guys do? First, we have to recognize that there's a lot of things we can't control. We can't control federal aid. We can't control the state budget. But what can we do? Well, we can contact our local legislators and we can share with them the realities of the monetary needs of a small rural district. Because we're not the ones who have, you know, people advocating for us down at the Capitol. Your large urban districts are the ones that have people constantly advocating for their needs. Small rural districts, we just don't have a political action group that's telling state legislators what we need. We have funding gaps need to be addressed. That state funding model has to adjust with inflation, which it currently hasn't done. We also should not, you know, we should advocate that they don't make cuts to the education line item in the budget. And we should suggest that they need to develop a different model, one that better supports rural districts. There are four hundred and twenty-one districts in the state, roughly eight hundred thousand students in the state. The model they have doesn't serve each district and each, each student equally. They try, but it hasn't. It's proven it hasn't because eighty-eight percent of all districts have gone to referendum in the last couple of years. If, you know, the, the state line item, the education line item, it's currently between six and seven billion dollars in the state budget. And they call it equalization aid. It's earmarked for public education, but because it is the largest area of the state budget, it is also the largest target. When cuts need to be made, that's, well, we'll just take a little out of the equalization. We'll take a little out of the equalization, which ultimately divided by four hundred and twenty-one districts and eight hundred thousand students really negatively impacts the kids around the state.
Very is that where the school choice money comes from, that too?
Yep. Yep, absolutely. You can share with our community, talk to our community. You can share with them why the school funding model needs to be changed. Like I said before, right now forty-six percent of our limited revenue comes from state aid and fifty-four percent comes from property taxes. You can tell them about the needs of our building, about the programs and about the students that we have here. You can invite them in to see what we do firsthand. You can share with them why we have our current referendum and what our proposed referendum money is going to be used for. You can tell them the importance of increasing our enrollment. You can engage other community leaders and stakeholders in discussions about how we can attract people to our community. Or perhaps the development of additional housing. We are currently land-rich, people poor. One of the best ways to increase enrollment in our district is to provide homes for families to live in. Finally, you can maintain a healthy but not increasing, a healthy fund but balance. Right now, we are negatively impact, or negatively funded at the tertiary level. So the best way for us to maintain or possibly even increase our state aid is for us to spend the money that we're allocated for this coming year. But we also don't want to reduce our fund balance too much either. Because doing so could possibly lead to us needing to short-term borrow to pay our bills. And that's an added expense that we, we can avoid by maintaining a healthy fund balance. I hope that this has given you a little better understanding of how our district is funded and what we can all do to ensure that our students are getting the highest quality school possible, because obviously in Russia, education is available.
And very simple terms. Nothing against you, Dennis, but in very simple terms, really nice, good laid out. I like the diagram. Really good.
Thanks. And thanks for letting me do this, because.
Give you an A for your class.
Awesome. My professor, they gave me an A.
All right, consider policy update, first reading.
This is the first reading of policy. This is an update that comes to us as part of the new updates and all these have to do with federal funding. Because there's some language that has come about that's the again, anytime there's an adjustment at the federal level, as far as how to procure grants and how to spend grants and how to go about spending federal money, there's always always something that needs to be done. It's like when you apply for a federal grant, it might be like, hey, we need clean water. So we're going to apply for a grant to purify our water, but then there's some sort of hydro, something, something tie on. You, you can only spend it between the hours of, you know, noon and three in the afternoon. There's always some weird tag along that comes with that. Well, when things get updated, we have to go through some updates. This is first reading. I don't know if you've had a chance to look through all the policies. I do not anticipate going through them one, one by one because Rachel and I did go through and have a recommended adjustments there. Again, very typical, green is the ads, the red is the strikes. There were a couple of choices and we tried to match it up with our current practice as best we could. There is a new policy as far as property inventory. We do have a property inventory, but it just, I don't know that it's a hundred percent accurate, and we basically put that together for our insurance, annual liability, insurance updates. But that's the reason for, behind this. I would ask that we review that unless there's questions now. But then I would ask that there's any questions we brought up at the March meeting during the second reading, which would be final approval.
So we don't, we don't need to approve this.
No, first reading. So no action is necessary. Yep, that'd be for second reading.
All right. Consider district. Oh, did anybody have any questions about that? I'm sorry. No? Okay. I hope we're still awake here. All right. Consider district benefit flex spending account.
So a flex spending account. Many, many places have them. Basically, you have, you allow your employees to take money out of their paycheck in a pre-tax sense, which then allows them to spend it on medical expenses, contacts and contact solution, braces and or dental implants and stuff like that, as well as childcare. Well, in a health reimbursement account, which is where the district would have a promise to reimburse our employees for their health insurance deductibles, you can use a flex spending account. We have an HSA high deductible plan. You cannot use an FSA for healthcare expenditures for, because you have the HSA to do that. But it's still something that could be used for childcare, for vision and dental. But recently, we've had some people that have asked about this because it, it can be a pretty nice savings when it, when you're dealing with childcare. There are some annual limits, just like there's annual limits to four or three contribution, four or three B and four or one K contributions. There's limits to what you could put in there. But it could be a tax benefit for our employees. We sent out a survey and tried to understand how many people would participate in this because there is a cost. But there's also cost saving. So if our employees are taking money out pre-tax for childcare expenses and let's say they take out fifty five thousand dollars, they're not paying tax on that, and the taxes that the district matches, we're also not paying that tax. So the idea was, is there enough people interested in the FSA that it would be neutral for the district? There would be an additional cost. And the answer is yes. There was enough people that expressed that they would take out the childcare and they would use it for different things. Now, there's a handful of people that said we'd probably use up to a thousand, or some people said probably between a thousand and two thousand. And then there's other people with younger children that said we would use the max, so five thousand plus whatever that max is. Which, as we did our calculations, it does seem like it would be something that would be put into the district. So I can work through this or not, depending on, on what you, you prefer me to do. This is something that's, that would, would need to be managed. So again, as we talked about Rachel checking out on the revenue limit. That's going to be a, a her and a me thing to make sure that, that we have this up and running. And quite, quite honestly, when it comes to setting it all up, that's going to be more, more Rachel. It comes to explaining, I can answer questions and things. But that's just another thing that is put out to the business position. So just a, a point of noting. Scroll through all this. There, it talks about how it's calculated. And at the very end, I think we had, remember it was like an eighteen thousand dollar quote, if we ended it up correctly, does it have the actual quote?
No, so there's a monthly mill of a hundred and five dollars and then an annual minimum of like a hundred and fifteen. So this basically costs the districts thirteen seventy-five annually to offer. It would save our employees if they were, if they were to set aside the max five thousand. It's eighteen, twenty, thirty percent in federal and state withholding, as well as seven point six five percent in FICA and Medicare. The district would save that seven point six five percent in FICA and Medicare. So if we could get a combined eighteen thousand dollars in deductions from our employees, which is what we sent the survey out, and it seems that, yes, we could likely get that level of participation that would allow us to break even six point seven five, or seven point six five percent of eighteen thousand is that thirteen seventy-five. So that would allow us to cover the cost of offering this. Anything beyond that would be a slight savings to the district. Anything, any deductions, anything that they would set aside in their accounts and not use by the end of the year, that would go back to the district then to help offset the cost of administering the program. So it seems that we should be able to at least and possibly it making, you know, a slice of.
And there were that, whatever they have left in there. Because that can be some hard feelings there.
It's a use it or lose it type of.
We would make sure we.
That's what we got to educate on exactly. What are you going to spend this on? What can you spend it on? And make sure you utilize that service or that, you know, if you're a takeout for braces this next year because you want to have braces for your child. You better get braces that year, otherwise you're going to lose that two thousand dollars you take out of that, right? That's part of the education.
This would be strictly a dependent care, so childcare, elderly care. So not medical, not medical. This is this, we can't do the medical. This would be specifically for dependent care, which is what, what was brought up to us as a need. And in survey, those were the responses we got. Yes, we are. There would be a need for that participation.
What is it? Max at five thousand for a family?
So twenty to thirty percent, thirty percent of that would be fifteen hundred. So if you set aside five thousand dollars pre-tax, you are saving yourself fifteen hundred dollars of course a year. Some part of the education would be to really make sure that people understand which daycares qualify. Because like, and we're seeing we have this, but I couldn't use it because my daycare provider was a family member who was not a licensed daycare.
They were a cash.
They were, I love you so much.
No claiming that one on taxes.
They had one of those too.
This is something that we could talk before a year or two reevaluate. It's not a, you know, it's an annual thing. It's not something that we, you know, start.
Yeah, for sure. But we are, we are recommending the approval because we do have staff members that have come to us to request it. Other districts have, have used this as an incentive to hire younger people that are starting families. We anticipate that the usage, and we sent out the survey that says that we anticipate there'd be enough usage to offset the cost. So, and again, we can try it for, as Rachel decided, we can try it for a year or two. If it doesn't seem to be working the way we thought it would be working, or all of a sudden we have all those families grow up and, and there's no other younger families that are using childcare then, or elder care, then we can always relinquish the program at that time. But we'd recommend approving this for next year's, next school year.
Do I have a, does anyone have any questions or do I have a motion to approve the district flex spending account as presented? Okay.
Oh, like one of the, one of the concerns I would have would be we offer it to them, which I think is a good thing, like most companies do. But then if we take it away, right, saying two or three years, we take it away because it's not working, right? Are we going to have, how much of a complaint are we going to have saying, oh, well, this is part of our pay. We're taking, now you're taking stuff away from the teachers and we're taking away from faculty and you know.
The only way, the only way it would go away is if it was stopped being used. That means it's no longer a need. That means nobody's taking advantage of it.
Or if the, or if the district continue to lose money doing it, right?
Yeah, we lost money doing it anyway.
We lose money doing it, now all of a sudden it's at a cost to us. Yes, it's, it's saving whatever, say, ten families, it's saving them money. But it's at a cost to the district. Well, okay, well, I get it. I'm helping ten families, but.
So again, the total cost would be a thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars if nobody participates.
Sure.
If ten families participate, that's our.
No problem.
So a thousand.
That's, that's our.
Okay, I was, I wasn't sure. I didn't know if you were. If it's thirteen seventy-five, my budget.
Of those four families?
Of, of everyone, whoever signs up for it. And again, if there's nobody signing up for it, we're spending that money to have the, we would say, no, but then there should be very little complaining because nobody's utilizing it. So we're not taking anything away from them. Any new hires would be the complaint, and that could be a complaint that says, hey, this is a benefit that the district no, no longer offers. Yeah, because nobody's utilizing it. So why are we spending money on something that nobody's doing? Right now, it seems to be a, a good thing. It could serve as a recruitment tool. We anticipate there'd be utilization.
Maybe another possibility would be, okay, if we do decide to end this thirteen hundred dollar commitment, that money is going back to employees in some other way. I don't think so.
Okay, well, I have a motion on the table. I, I need a second. And.
I'll, I'll second it. Matt, unless you've got more objections?
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor in a second minute to approve the district benefit flex spending account as presented. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Any abstention? Okay, motion is carried. Consider Spanish long-term stuff.
So this isn't really necessarily anything that needs board approval at this. This isn't really necessarily, um, anything that needs board approval at this point because the dollar amount comes in below the threshold. But I just wanted to inform the board kind of the process that we've gone through administratively, trying to find a Spanish long-term sub. We did have one applicant that, um. Was unable to join us via Zoom because, or Google Meet, because they couldn't get their technology to work for some reason. So Mary and I conducted a, a phone call with the person. Um, because even though this person would be a secondary. Teacher sub with Shane, Mary's a former Spanish teacher. So, uh, and Shane, I think you were, uh. You weren't attending that meeting because he had other obligations at the high school level. Um. So we had a conversation with her. She was, um, seemed to be like it would be a good fit. And then we. Talked about the schedule and she emailed us the next day and said, I don't want to teach middle school. I'm not interested. Cause she's a high school person, not a middle school person, which is unfortunate because it would have been somebody that was. Fairly local, um, that could be here in person with our kids. Um, that's not happening. Now, our. Current instructor, Mr. Summers, is still going to teach the, um, Irving class, which is the first hour, psych round?
First hour.
First hour. He's still going to teach that class. So we really are looking at covering. Four other classes because he also has some, um, ELL time or EL time to work with our Spanish speaking students. Um, so really we're looking to cover a Spanish one, a Spanish two, and then the two classes of middle school Spanish. Um, we have a couple of options. We have our. Our Irving network that had a person that could be here a couple of days, um, synchronous and then would have information. Um, as far as packet information, we had another individual that has pre-made packets per se or pre-made. Units, if you will, that is kind of a work on your own for the students. And we thought that would be not very engaging. Um, and then we have a company that's called, uh, Cambiego, which has a native speaker. That, um, is synchronous online with the students in the class every day. Um. That cost, uh, per class is just under fifty dollars per class because they have a, a, a spring discount. Um, so if we had them teach four classes, it would be two hundred bucks. If it was two classes, it'd be a hundred bucks. Um, you know, all day it would be. You know, if we have that other class, it'd be six classes or five classes, just times fifty bucks. We had a demo with our Spanish one, um, that again, uh, Mary and I attended one of Alex's classes to see, uh, how it was going to go. Um. We don't think it's ne- necessarily the, the greatest solution for a middle school class. Um, but our Spanish one and our Spanish two classes should be able to pick up because the demo. Had a native Spanish speaker teaching the class, um, where at least for me. The English was hard to understand and I don't know if that's because I didn't have my hearing aids in or if just the dialect I, I couldn't pick up on it. Um, and the kid's reaction was, well, we were kind of trying to figure out what she was talking about and. We, we, we didn't really have a way to communicate that, but we also had it on the big screen, not. The earbuds and individual screens, which is how it, it would be. So that would make it a little bit better probably. Um, as we sat down and talked about it administratively, um. Mary said, she goes, I will take the sixth grade and let's do, um, Cambiego for the Spanish one, Spanish two and seventh. And then she thought about it more. She came back and said, I'll do the middle school and we can have Cambiego do the high school. Um, and I said, I'm not letting you do two classes because we have other job duties. And three different times she came back and said, I will do the sixth and seventh. Because I don't think the seventh is going to be successful in that format. Um, and so I finally caved after the third time, three strikes, I'm out. And our new, our, our plan is to have. Mary teach the sixth and seventh grade Spanish classes for the six weeks that, um, Alex will be out. And our plan is to hire Cambiego to do the, um. The Spanish one and Spanish two classes. And that would require us to put our. Classes with their Chromebooks in an alternative location. They still have to be supervised. We're presently thinking the library, um, to do that with and then. They would be tuned in on their individual computer. The only question that I still have to seek clarification is do they need to have a large view so they can see everybody? And if that's the case, we're probably going to take a look at our distance learning lab. That's also a little bit tighter. Um, that's our plan. That, that cost. We're, we're, we're thinking that it'd be four days a week and then Friday would be kind of a catch-up workday. Um, so we're really looking at like four hundred dollars a week for six weeks. So it's under the threshold. So we don't necessarily need. To have board approval on that. Um, just wanted to make sure that you were aware of kind of what we were, we were thinking. Now, if we were going to. Have Cambiego for all of it, it would be over the five thousand dollar threshold, which we would need board approval. But, um. With Mary taking the middle school, we, we're out of that situation. So that's just our Spanish update. Any questions that you have, we're here to answer. Um, but we, we could not find a person to come into the building. To be an in-person substitute for that.
Now then, Mary is taking over the middle school. Would it be better to reach out to the lady that you guys interviewed to do the high school? Instead of hiring. I don't know, right?
Um.
To say, hey, you know, we, we figured it out where you wouldn't teach middle school anymore. You were only teaching high school.
We had reached out to her shortly after with. Um.
Adjustments?
Some adjustments and she did not respond.
No response.
She didn't answer our call, call us back or respond to our email.
So there's, you'd have two classes that you'd be teaching? Is that correct? How many days a week is that?
Every day. Are they both day one, day two?
It's two different groups. So on A days, it's half of the sixth grade, half of the seventh grade.
But they're.
Little different, seventh grade, sixth grade. Seventh grade does eight A B day every day. Sixth grade does eight A B day and then every other Friday.
Got it. Okay. So it's not, it's not a strict A B day, A A B day.
I'll teach you over the wax in the door.
It'd be two hours though, every day?
Uh, an hour and a half, forty-three, forty-three.
Is it going to be doing morning, afternoon or?
Uh, the seventh grade classes at twelve thirty and the sixth grade classes at two oh four.
When are you going to eat?
I'm currently eating so I don't worry. Thanks for the caramel.
As you come here for the.
This is last for one file.
Any other questions about Spanish? Otherwise I'll move on to CISA. All right.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you. CISA five contract. This is very similar to, um. What we, uh, had last year. It's the exact same contract. Uh, there have been marginal increases that are appropriate with CPI. Um, we have, I, I have reached out, uh, to CISA to ask them if this middle school. If we do incorporate sixth grade into middle school, would they be able to support some professional development about middle school concept? Because, um. We have some newer teachers there that haven't necessarily been in the traditional middle school. And there is a different philosophy. I, uh, reached out to a former colleague of mine in the Chippewa area. Um, and, and had some pretty good insight that, uh, Mr., um, Larson and I have talked about as far as what that might look like. So. Um, that would be, that would not be anything extra. That would just be included. If we decided to use that, that would be included in our school improvement days that we already purchased and it might be. Might be good use of those days. And that would be, if we would go that direction, that could be something that we would use. Um, ongoing throughout the year to make sure that we're having different checkpoints along the way to make sure that we're doing the best we can for our middle school students. But. Um, other than that, that contract is ver- is the exact same as was this year. So I would recommend that we approve that contract for CISA. Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the CISA final contract for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. All right, discussion of morning drop-off procedure.
So I have a. Question about the morning drop-off procedures. Uh, we remind our parents, um, specifically at the elementary level. That when they pull up to the curb, it's really supposed to be continuing traffic. If they're going to get out of the car. And walk their students all the way in down to the room, they're supposed to park over in the parking lot and do that. Um, we have several parents that choose not to do that. We haven't really been the police officer to enforce that. We're like, okay, let's just hurry up. But that, what that does is that. Instead of having four or five spots available, now you only have. One or two spots available to drop off and it slows down the process. So, um, I was asked to. Put this on the agenda for a discussion and so we put it on for a discussion. Um, open to comments and questions at this time.
I'll speak on it since I drop my kids off almost every day. Um, noticeably, it has been getting worse and worse, I think, right?
I mean, it tends to in winter when parents. Would rather just, you know, pull up as close as they can to the door, get their kids in and leave.
So the weird thing is talking to a police officer and asking, hey, how can you help with us? The police can't help.
They're not breaking any law.
It's not breaking a law because the signs on the side of the road and the sidewalk say no parking from eight AM till four PM. They're parking there at seven fifty and at seven fifty-five. So now there's two, three cars parked and it wouldn't be bad if they parked together. But they're parking one here and one here. So you can't even get in. To drop your kids off. So now parents are either backing up traffic or they're letting them out in the middle of the street, right?
But I'm, and they've always let out in the middle of the street. Um, I find. That we get more middle of the street about halfway through the year as more high school kids are dropping off their younger sibs. Right? They, they just pull up to the stop sign, quick, let them out. Um, and. The parents that do park, you know, they originally pull up. But then someone who does what I would call like a kiss and fly, right? Like you pull up, like Matt pulls up, his girls get out. There's really not a hubbub. They, they get their things, they leave, he pulls out, you know, when traffic permits. Um. But what happens is, you know, he pulls out, the car behind him has gotten out to walk their child's class. And the car behind that car is a kiss and fly and the car behind that car is a parking, right? So you, you have a situation where as people pull up and then.
What these parents don't realize is if they just went to the other side of the street, it's parking, fifteen minute parking on the other side of the street.
So have you noticed people who do it? Are they habituals?
Yes.
Okay, it's the same seven or eight families.
Have we tried like giving them a little notice? Like here's a piece of paper, you know, or here's a, here's a thing. Look, this is really causing delays and. Safety hazards, you know. We, the school board would appreciate it or the administration would appreciate it if you did this.
In the past, I've talked with individuals, um. Yes, I haven't this year because it's the, it's, it's the same people every year.
True.
Um. That, you know, end up walking their children to class. And we don't have a policy against walking children to class.
I don't think we should. I mean, I'm fine with blocking their kids.
And there's, and there's a major difference too between a fourth and fifth grader, just grabbing their stuff and getting out of the car. Versus a kindergarten first grader that has the car seat and you gotta unbuckle and you gotta do, make sure the shoes are out, make sure the coat is zipped and you got, I don't. Still have the, the mittens on the, on the strings.
I don't think it's that even. It's when they, when they physically leave and walk the kid in, right? They're letting them out of the car. No questions, right? Not problems.
They're walking, it takes ten minutes.
But now all of a sudden they walk in and now their vehicle's sitting there like. Hey, now you're just blocking, you know, like it's just. And it's, like you said, it, I mean, the past two weeks, I think have been way worse, right? And obviously it's the weather, right? But. It's, it's still the weather, right? It's still, guys, here. So I don't know if we can send out a reminder, right? And say, hey, look.
I usually do around this time in the Friday. I, I mean, if you want me to, I can talk directly with the families again. Um.
Mention that, we can also mention the opposite direction. If you come up and come the other way.
Car the other side.
It, it's another, what, twenty feet to get across the road? It's not very much further and then you're not blocking the, the drop-off procedures. It's a suggestion. And maybe a friendly suggestion with these papers with the explanations might help them. Or just their. I, I can also draft a, a letter for the board, um, and. Do that too, if you, if you. That might help like a little bit of authority, you know, hey, look, to get you a badge with a gale and hat.
I told Dennis I'll go out there and stand and say.
If I can, I'd.
Put your badge in. You can, you can get ahead of safety cadets.
I wouldn't want to.
I used to have internal.
Check our safety cadets is something that might be an.
But we could put Carla in charge of the safety cadet. That program, right? The morning safety cadet chief, that could shake. She's not a.
I'll, I'll put it back.
We can just let her share with the board and ju- just that way, that way you, you can see it before it gets sent out.
All right, shall we move on? Yes, I'm getting tired. I have some coffee. I, I could use a cup of coffee right now. Okay, discussion attendance and referral incentives.
So, uh, this topic has come up, um, as we have gone through the compensation model conversations and there's been side conversations. Um, about something we could do, um, noticing that. And, and we, I anticipated this happening because we're trying to be more flexible with our days off to give people that, um, traditionally. Um, have taken pick days that were unpaid. For reasons because they only have one personal day and it's really not a medical illness or it's not, but it is something important to, to the family. So we had increased and said you could take, you know, from a professional teacher standpoint, four of your ten days could be basically a personal day or PTO. As a result, we've had people utilize them, which is good because we've been more flexible and I think that's a good benefit. But that also means that some days i- in this whole year, we've been struggling to, to fill the substitute. So, um. I- in, in one of our recent conversations, Rachel and I were talking about, you know, could we have an, an attendance incentive, you know? If, and then this could be for, I mean, the bus drivers currently have attendance and safety incentive in their bus driver guidelines. Is this something that could be somehow? Shared or expanded to say, you know, if you're here ninety for, ninety-five percent of the time throughout the course of the year, there's. A, a, an attendance incentive. Um. This might be a conversation for the compensation model because that is in review at this time. And I know, um. Matt and Carla are, have attended, uh, one of the meetings and, and I think it, it was a pretty good meeting about, um, what things. Teachers like and what things, um, they like about the compensation model. Um, the other thing that we, we had talked about is a referral incentive. So, you know, if somebody would refer. Uh, you know, if I know James is a, a person that could come in and teach and substitute in our, in our district has flexibility. And I refer him to the district and now let's say James comes in a, a minimum amount of times, like five or 10 times, not one and goes, oh my God, I'm never going back there again. But it now becomes a, a, a sub that subs a minimum amount, then do I get a finder's fee, a referral bonus or a referral incentive? To say, hey, I'm, I'm adding, I'm actively trying to find people that would help us by subbing. Uh, again, that might be a compensation model. Um, I guess I, I brought it up. I, I put it on the board agenda for discussion to see if there's interest in that. Um, we currently don't pay out sick days on an annual basis. Some school districts do that. So. But it, but I, I think that also defeats the purpose of banking some sick days because we, um, do not provide short-term insurance. For individuals. Um, we do provide long-term, but the short-term, a lot of times that's why you allow those sick days to be built up to a certain point. So that way if somebody does have a critical illness, they can utilize that short-term sick days to get to their long-term disability.
Do we have a buildup? I mean, how many days can they carry over? Do we know? I mean, what's the total number of sick days they can actually have?
For professional staff, there's no limit.
Oh, there's no limit. So they could end up with five hundred?
Yes. If you're, if you're.
If you're here long enough.
And don't use anything.
Yeah.
Ten days a year, fifty years, possible, I guess.
We've got to deal with two hundred.
Just curious because we, ours was limited to the app, right? We couldn't have any more than that.
And I, we do have a limit for support staff.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to brainstorm and, and talk about different ways that we could. Again, try to incentivize things, um, either keeping people here and would it make a difference or finder's fee? And again, that might all be conversation for the comp model. I'm not sure. But we thought we'd vary it up to see if the board had any other commentary of likes, dislikes, pros, cons.
Our company does it. If we get somebody in, you get a certain amount of money after, right away, three months in a year and it works. To get people in. Cause then all of a sudden it's like, hey, you, you do this, this, that. I can make some money off this. It's. It actually is a pretty good deal, I think. To get people in, cause then all of a sudden it's like, hey, you, you do this, this, that, and I can make some money off this. It's, it actually is a pretty good deal, I think. Obviously, it's a different business, but people are still people.
And typically, I mean, the faculty knows, you know, they're, they know people in the same. Business, right? So they're, they're associated with that and if, to me, if. If you can get someone in that another teacher knows or another faculty member knows. You know, you can take their word for it too, right? I mean, that's their, you know, if, if I recommend someone, I hope people are like, hey, you know, Matt recommended them. So now. If they make it wonderful, good job, Matt. If they stink at it. We're not taking his recommendation anymore. You know what I mean? Like, but that's, I think it's a good thing to have, like some kind of a referral bonus, absolutely. But I don't have um information about what other districts have done because uh it, it came up recently and I haven't had. A next uh, a next CWC meeting in the conference to, to pose that question. So. That maybe I'll investigate that a little bit further and try to find out if other people have this, um and ask others to, you know, share language that they have so I can. Potentially have a, a recommendation for the board or incorporate that into the compensation model revision that will be coming to the board eventually as well.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? Okay, let's move on to employee transportation agreement for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
So for next school year, um again, as a, as a conversation, many times I've seen. This type of agreement that would be between the school district and a staff member that's using their personal vehicle to transport students. Um, I was, I had a situation when I was down by Hartford where um there was a student, specialized student that just. The bus was not a good place for this kiddo. Um, so after talking with parents and everything else. Sometimes you do a parent contract if they're able to transport. This family was not able to transport. And so we were able to um have a separate contract for our special education assistant to go pick up the student. Happened to be on her way to work anyway, so it worked out pretty well. Pick him up and then drop him off after school. Well. There were some certain things we, we, that was a separate contract, so we paid her differently for that travel. She had to have a certain amount of insurance on her vehicle and if she didn't have that, then we paid the extra amount of the insurance. There wasn't necessarily a fuel reimbursement because it was on the way to work anyway. Had it been off the beaten path and, and a uh different, there would have been some compensation like that. Well, talking with our insurance company, they are written, they're now recommending that we have a transportation agreement. For anybody that is going to be using any vehicle outside of the school bus. Just to set some things and have things very clear, like, you know, when you're operating the vehicle, if there's an accident, you're gonna report it right away. You're not gonna wait a week. You're not gonna be in a position where you're not able to drive based on, you know, inappropriate things, you know, vaping or smoking or um alcohol, anything like that. It, it's being recommended and as we looked at it, we uh stole one from another district and I think I've updated the Roffel. Um, agreement to, to consider uh all those different things, but. Um, just to run, run through here quickly, it does have, you know, the employee's physical condition, the license to be able to do this. Um, compliance with the rules of the road. So if you're, you know, picked up uh with a speeding violation, you have to notify us right away so that we know that. Um, this would all be in, uh, on top of our background check that we currently do um for any drivers as well. But this is just an agreement that. Explains to the person and they read the agreement, they sign it, doesn't say, yep, we understand that. This is a, an agreement with us in the district that we're going to drive our school vehicles transporting kids. Or their personal vehicle transporting kids, um that they're gonna, going to behave and be in a certain mindset to do that. And they're gonna do all the reporting and make sure that they are on the up and up with all that stuff too. So. Hopefully we've all had a chance to read through this. Um, I'm recommending that we approve this for next year. And then we set up the uh, the management of such with making sure we get all of our drivers on board so that they have this on file.
Well, and, and I think it's important because now we have a lot of like coaches that aren't. Basically employees of our school district. I mean, they aren't meant to become a coach, but. We're, they're using vans now to drive because we have smaller groups of kids. So I think that's important.
We've had a couple of small teams um that have used the van and, and some activities too. Um, we use vans, well, we use vans and Mary's car for the ski trip not too long ago. So, you know, we, we do have that FCC LA, you know, they take two and then three and now seven. So they're transporting kids. Those are all examples. Um, I, I'm also investigating how much it would cost uh for a municipal. Municipality like ourselves, cause that's, it's in the municipal market to get an updated school van. I've had several complaints about um the big white van. Um, if we have teachers that have taken that to meetings and such. They're, they're not really, they would rather take their own car than to take that van. Um, just because it's, it's big, it's not in the greatest repair. I, I don't, personally, I, I don't find that it drives bad. Um, I've taken it to some meetings as well. It's just, it's not comfortable. It's not. New, it's a bit dirty, it's a bit rusty, it's. It's not awesome. But can it get you there back? It can, but it's not awesome. So.
More industrial than it is. I, I think it, it feels more industrial than it feels.
Anything else? It's just good. So just to let you know, I'm investigating what that would look like and what the cost would be. I know, uh, again, down by Hartford, we made a purchase. Um, there's only certain car dealerships that'll, that'll work with municipalities. And so I asked around about other people that have used them, the, the, the dealerships up here and I've gotten a good list from other. Other uh school districts, so still continue to do that. But we do think that we should have this agreement on file because that way it kind of just. Everything's right out in the open. This is, this is what the expectations are. Should something happen, reporting, you need to make sure that you have everything covered. So. Hope any questions?
If any questions, otherwise I will need a motion to approve the employee transportation agreement for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
Just let me know your list of dealers if you end up going somewhere.
As far as.
I will make a motion. I'm making a motion.
Do you second it?
Yes, good seconded.
Very good.
We were discussing it.
Well, you were discussing something that really did pertain to the motion per se.
Yeah, once it was a bother.
Sorry about that. All right, uh, all those in favor to approve the employee transportation agreement for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. All right, adapt budget timeline.
All right, so um a- again, as Rachel and I were reviewing the different policies that pertain to finance. Um, we talked about formalizing the board's process. Um, so. A- as it would come to be, as, as Mary is going through the class, the coursework for. Not only district administrator, but also for the business manager, working with uh Iola and obviously Rachel here. Looking at the, at the timeline and we've gone through this process, but we've never really had this official um approval of a, of a. A, a budget development calendar. So um if we take a look at this, this is basically saying on a month-by-month basis, as it pertains to the budget development. What should be there? So we have the, you know, obviously, um, we, we, this is, a- another district uses something very similar to this. And so we have looked at it and kind of updated it. And so we have the um twenty-four, twenty-five, which would be, you know, forecasting for next year and what it looks like. Um, and then the current year twenty-five, twenty-six activity. So we have July. Finalized budget development, gather summer school, classmates and people count, review the revenue limit. In August, we're going to be doing the review of the revenue, revenue limit. And preparing budget presentations for annual meeting. September, we are going to be collecting the people count and reviewing the revenue limit. You know. We've, we've traditionally had the annual meeting in October. It doesn't have to be there. It can be moved back. Um, I, I, I don't necessarily recommend having it in October. Because I've had it on the exact same. I was with the district that had the annual meeting, the budget hearing, and then went right into the board meeting and the board meeting information was adjusted. From the annual meeting information, even though it was only a half hour apart, because the annual meeting information. You create that before we get our final numbers and because they push that back to October, there's certain reporting requirements. You have to have it out at a certain time. And there's gotta be enough leeway for the annual meeting that didn't allow us to update it until we got our final numbers in mid-October. And then you had it both on the same night. There were so many confusing, confused individuals that, well, la- a half hour ago, you said this and now you're saying that. We, we don't understand that. So I'm not recommending we move it to uh in October, but um as we were talking, we were, what, w- w- we're, we're planning to have it during September now. Last year, um, we approved at the annual meeting to hold it between X date and, and, and October thirty-first. So moving it to September is not necessarily something that we have to decide tonight, but that's where we're gonna recommend it on this um planning document. So tonight we're just asking you to approve the planning document, so that way we have official board action that, yep, this is what, what we're gonna go through with. Um, and we're planning that we would move that to September. We had just, the closer we get to October, the better our information is, similar to our referendum information, right? If you're doing a two-year referendum and it's next year, we have really good information. If you're trying to forecast five years, two years removed from when the referendum starts. It, it's a difficult thing to forecast.
Is this something that's always been, but it's just never been?
Annual meeting?
But the budget.
Everything on here reflects current practice except for moving the annual meeting to from August to September. Everything on there is what we currently do. We've just never formalized.
I guess what I'm saying is I've never seen.
This follows up the practice.
It's never been actual in writing.
It's never been there for everyone to know. Okay, which is nice. I mean, that, that's.
So similar to Mary's presentation, there's certain things that have to be done. This is, this is a document that many districts will have the board approve to say this is our, our budget. Preparation, development and timeline. And then that way, you have a copy of it, we all have a copy of it, that everybody's on the same page as, as to what's happening. During the budget development and then after the budget's been approved. Um, that way there's no surprises, there's no what-ifs and that way, if for some reason. You know, I get in a car accident and, and, and Rachel is on vacation and all of a sudden we get to a board meeting and, and.
Matt's in charge.
Somebody's like, wait a second, we're supposed to do this this month. Everybody's on the same page.
Mary is.
Oh yeah, Mary is.
So a- a- again, subject to questions, but um this is, it, it matches current practice. It's something that, that should be done and as we try to formalize what we do, um instead of just being a little bit informal. Um, trying to have more eyes on what is gonna be needed during the different months. We think it's a good idea and it'll help keep all of us on task.
What also really lays out like. What, what was the aha for me is all of the different reports that you don't know that she submits. So, I mean, between the two of them, they. There's a lot of DPI compliance reporting that is. That falls under the business office. So this really just really lays it out. This is due this month, this is due this month. And there are some months where, like, we're working in three different years. What we're doing last year still, we're working on current year and then we're thinking ahead to the next year, following year, yeah.
Well, I also think it's gonna be good for um, as new board members come on, they'll know exactly what's going on from year to year. Or months to months.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second, okay, Matt. All right, there's motion on the floor and seconded to. To approve the budget timeline as presented. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. All right, consider going into closed session. Do I have a motion? Help, I'll go into closed session. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Matt? Okay, a motion has been made and sent into a joint, uh, to your journey to closed session at eight oh three. All those in favor say aye. Okay, those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
I would like to. Thanks for letting me out.
I don't know.
Well, it's kinda interesting.
When you don't know, right? You don't.